Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann is absent, excused. Councilwoman Hart?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
Present.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Present.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Present.
Councilwoman Wishart?
Present.
Council President McDermott?
I'm here.
A quorum is present.
Okay. We will begin tonight's meeting with special announcements and presentations. First up, we have our State Representative, Peter Hirsberg.
Thank you, Council President McDermott. It's been awhile since I've been here. Been up in Lansing for about two months. We've been working heavily on the budget up there. We just finished this past Wednesday, or Thursday morning if you will. So I just wanted to come up and share some of my committee assignments so that you know to reach out to me on certain issues. So I was, normally state reps get four committees. They put me on two committees that are at the same time. So there's a little bit of inefficiency going on up there. So I will be serving on the Energy Committee. That's only met once since taking office because we've been focusing on the budget. And, but that does give me the ability to reach out to DTE if there's any issues within the city. So I am in contact with some of their people within the company, with their lobbyists, and as well as the rest of the Energy Committee. I'm on the Transportation Committee, which we've met a few times, but it's just been some kind of day-to-day things, some highway signage, things like that. And I'm on the Behavioral Health Subcommittee. And on that one, there's actually plenty of good legislation coming forward regarding women's healthcare and a lot of mental health items. So last year, when the Democrats didn't have majority, there's almost 300 bills that built up and are now going to be coming out this year. So you're going to be hearing a lot, a lot more from Lansing on that. And then I just want to share my phone number for the office if anybody wants to reach out. It's 517-373-5910. Or you can reach out to me personally at my cellphone number is 734-578-3412. And then, we did have some budget updates thankfully. I worked together with Senator Polhankey. So the difference between the city budget, the mayor proposes it, council votes on it. Up in Lansing, the Senate has to agree with the House and the Governor's Office. So changes were being made. We were there for 22 hours straight in the Capitol doing the budget.
We said the Pledge of Allegiance twice.
So we did get a million dollars for Westland Streetscapes and beautification efforts. And I know that some of those appropriations chairs had talked to Mayor Coleman about it, as well as our neighboring state rep Ranjiv Puris. I want to thank them both for their work on that. And really thankfully, and we, I wouldn't have been able to do it without the help of Senator Polhankey, but we got a good amount of money for-
We did. You know, as, you've been a great partner. Again, I'm State Senator Dana Polhankey. And, you know, last year, I don't know if you remember, there was sort of a windfall. There was around $9 billion of federal money. It's a result of COVID that went to all the municipalities. I think Mayor Coleman, then Rep Coleman and I brought home $7 million for Westland. Things scaled back. They right-sized this year. However, we are delighted to present that we got the city of Westland $4.5 million. $3.5 million will be for Westland Fire Department Number Four. So congratulations to our- And that was the full ask. Typically, you ask for $3.5 million and you get like $2.5 million. So we got $3.5 million. I want to thank State Senator Sarah Anthony and Mayor Coleman for the ask and Senator Anthony for fighting for me on the Senate side to get that for you all. And I know Senator Representative Weiss was fighting for you on the House side.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention too, we also got $250,000 for the Clerk's Office because they participated in the early voting as the pilot program. We got money for that. And I'm going to come back in two weeks with a legislative update. We did pass some legislation that affected our teachers. They got a 3% increase in pay. And we did get a chunk of money for the district.
And I can talk to you about the chunk of money. Am I okay? Okay. So Wayne Westland Community School District will get an estimated $6.4 million in increased funding this year. The, the funding from the MIPSers payment, everything was structured a bit different this year at the school group's request. MIPSers is, you know, a MIPSers payment would be the amount of school Wayne Westland contributes toward payroll and, and health benefits for retirees. So we reduced that amount that they had to pay because part of it was paid off. So the funding from the MIPSers payment is an amount equivalent to what we're used to seeing is how much per pupil increase did we get? What's the foundation allowance? We're typically, it's typically this percent. So this would be the equivalent of a very high 6.2% foundation allowance. So the numbers you need to remember is 6.4 million straight dollars increase and that's equivalent to a 6.2% per pupil increase. I just want to alert, Rep, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to speak to you. Brett Hirsberg and I got a little excited. The Governor has not signed this yet. It has passed the House and Senate. If she vetoes, which she won't, there's going to be a problem. But I just wanted to put that out there. So it has not yet been signed by the Governor. I'm sure we're not going to have any problems. All right. Is that it? Any questions? Okay.
Mayor, do you want us all on there? Because, yeah, let's all go down.
I think residents should be in and it's their tax dollars.
Two, two rows please.
Mr. President.
All right. Well, certainly exciting news. We have one more special announcement and presentation from the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Hey, good evening, everybody. So it's a tradition in the city of Westland when we have a council member who leaves office, we want to honor them and congratulate them. And our State Representative Peter Hirsberg, we want to thank you for your, actually, come on up, Peter. So Peter, he's, he's, you know, he was our state rep since, what was it, late April 30th? But he was our city council member from January 1st, 2016, all the way to that date. And at that time, he was our longest-serving council member. And a lot of people know this already, but Peter and I are cousins. And Peter was really an inspiration for me to get into public office and leadership and to run for office. And I just want to take this moment to congratulate you, Peter, on your, your success as our state rep, but really for your service as our city councilman. You did almost nine years on council and very proud of you. Just a really happy moment for our family and for the city. So congratulations, Peter. Thank you. And I will hang this up in the office, but it, you know, a lot of these go out to people who are almost like retiring. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to continue to serve this city and this community for hopefully many years to come. But I appreciate all the time I had here on City Council. It's what really helped me learn about city services, funding, before getting up to Lansing. It's critical. I see a lot of state reps up there that don't have the local experience. And it can become problematic. So I'm really thankful that I was able to spend so much time here on City Council and be, be well-prepared. So, thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public beginning, at the beginning of the meeting, to address the council regarding items on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Is there anyone on my left comments on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Wilson.
I may be wrong, but I just have a question. Unfinished business, the only thing there? Approval of the contractor's agreement for the police station lobby? What was the cost?
Chief, did you want to address that during your question?
The $200,000 would be the bags.
200, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone on my right comments on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizens' comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Yes. Pro Tem.
Thank you so much. Item J and item K, I'd like to make a motion to move that to new business, please.
There's a motion on the floor to move Items J and K off the consent calendar to new business. Is there support? There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilman Wishart. Roll call. You don't have discussion. So to move Items J and K off the consent calendar, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann is absent, excused. Councilwoman Hart?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart?
Yes.
Council President McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, now onto the consent calendar. Are there any additional changes to consent calendar? Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, consent calendar carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held June 17th, 2024. Approval of minutes of study session held June 17th, 2024. Approval of bid for professional services of Flock Safety Agreement to deliver, install, and service 10 automated license plate readers for a period of two years. Amount not to exceed $67,100. Approval of bid to activate automated license plate readers function on the existing Axon Enterprises Master Services and Purchasing Agreement regarding police body and vehicle camera equipment for 43 months. Amount not to exceed $78,081.87. Approval of bid agreement between the city of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Crossing Guard Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $243,000. Approval of agreement between the city of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Golf Course Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $126,000. Approval of agreement between the city of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Westland Ice Arena Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $162,000. Approval of agreement between the city of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Park Rangers for a one-year period commencing July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $91,000. Approval of the City Hall Security Guard Contract with NAIAS Security LLC for a one-year period commencing on July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $55,000. Adoption of the Prepared Resolution authorizing the WW CSD Construction Technology Partnership Agreement to use 2024 and '25 home funds in the amount of $256,000 to build and/or rehabilitate the property at 38490 Glenwood. Adoption of Ordinance 248-A-115 and ordinance to amend Ordinance 248 to show CB1 Low Intensity Commercial Business District where PUD, the Planned Unit Development, is now shown in the area situated in the city of Westland described as 1155 North Wayne Road. This was introduced June 17th, 2024. The adoption of Prepared Land Vision Resolution 2203 Emerson. This is Planning Department Number 2263. This was approved by City Council May 6, 2024. And the last item on the consent calendar is adoption of Prepared Land Vision Resolution at 8493 Hugh. This is Planning Department Number 2265, approved by City Council, May 6, 2024. Now moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilwoman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yes.
Okay.
In Fund 285 American Rescue Plan, there are two allocations. Once again, this has happened previously where it was misallocated. There's two rental expenses for $300 each. I believe them to be misallocated.
Is the administration, Mayor, do you want to take that?
Bear with me, I'm pulling up that item as we speak. I'll look into this to confirm, but I believe the Corrigan Enterprises was related to the generator project at the police station that was improved by council through ARPA in a previous year. It's, it is only 600 bucks. So if council wants to remove this item and push that off and approve the rest of the vouchers while I look up the remaining answer, that's completely fine.
Yeah, I move to remove those two items from the voucher report.
Okay, so there's a motion to move the items from Fund 285 from the voucher report. Direct, made by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, previously, we had seen the same rentals by this Corrigan Enterprises. And Finance Director Steve Smith had indicated that they were misappropriated. So I'm going to say that I believe it to be misappropriated again. And then, we can always pass it later. But, you know, that's a fund that has very specific allocations to it that we all should be kept up to date on. So if this was something that was spent from ARPA, we should have received a report about it being spent.
Is there any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. To move Fund 285 out of the vouchers. It's being removed from the vouchers. Now we're back to the main motion on the vouchers. Is there any additional discussion on the vouchers? Any additional discussion on the vouchers? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
All right, now we are on unfinished business item, oh, sorry. Unfinished business item number one, approval of contractor agreement for police station lobby enhancement project to commence July 2024. Administration recommends sole construction amount not to exceed $200,000.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski?
Support.
Supported by Pro Tem Sampe. Is there any discussion from the maker? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, you know, now that we are going to be discussing the budget amendments and the budget is actually live today, it is now an appropriate time to be allocating any of the money that is earmarked for the 2425 budget year. So I appreciate, you know, the colleagues and the administration holding off so that there was, you know, a sense of ease when going forward with this project. And I look forward to it coming to fruition and the lobby being, you know, safe for all parties involved. Thank you.
You are welcome, Councilwoman. Pro Tem.
Thank you. So thank you for your patience, those at the police department. I think there was always the intent that we'd pass it, but again, it was just making sure that it was done the appropriate way. So thank you for your patience. We do look forward to having this project start. Hopefully, it could start tomorrow if passed. But again, the Sole construction does a great job. I know they have done other projects. So thank you again for your patience. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Yes, Councilman.
Council President, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but if you look to our minutes that we just approved, the motion at the last meeting was to postpone the contractor agreement for police station lobby until the budget amendments are fully approved. Seeing as that has not been done, I move that we move this item to follow the relocated Item K from the consent calendar. Just keeping up in line with what the motion was at the last week.
Moving it on the agenda, yes.
It's a matter of formality, Council President.
Understood. There's a motion on the floor to move the unfinished business. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Motion is moved. Item is moved, excuse me.
All right. So now we are on Item 1A, formerly known as Consent Calendar Item J. Approval of Professional Services Agreement with Higera Health to perform social worker services for the Westland Police Department.
Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampe? There's support? Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. And you had discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. So I actually had discussion because I feel very strongly about the benefit that it brings to our department. Higera Health, just for those that are watching at home, they work with our police department to really intervene in situations that otherwise our police department may or may not be experts in. This is a phenomenal addition. I have heard from so many residents that they're so happy to see Westland being the forefront and partnering with Higera Health. So they've been a really good partner. I, I brought it up just so we could talk about it a little bit more because I feel like mental health and behavioral health and everyone's dealing with something. I talk about this so much. And for us to have this as a component of our police department, it, it really is kind of gold standard. So I wanted to bring this up. I fully support this. And I want to hopefully have my colleagues supporting me in this as well.
Excuse me. All right. Is there any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Is there any additional discussion? I do have a note. I just want to say, echo the sentiments that my colleague said. Excuse me. This social work program has been going on, what, three years now with our social work team? Our third year with Jennifer and the, and the team over there. And, you know, the Westland Police were very proactive about taking on this initiative. This wasn't even something that, you know, we as a council had to push hard for. It was done under former Chief Zdrusik and now Chief Dolly's continued this program. They kind of took this on their, their own initiative. And I think this is a great program for our residents. There are certain situations out there that involve, you know, additional response when it is a mental health or a brain health crisis. And to have someone like our social work team be able to respond to those types of situations, I think is critically important and is a, a big service for our residents and those we serve. So I'm in, very much in support of this. So thank you for getting us to have discussion about this. It's a, it's a great program. Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? All right. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Now we move to Item 1B, formerly known as Consent Calendar Item K. Introduction of Budget Amendments for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2025.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski? Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
Not at the time.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah.
That's all you.
Imagine that. So I just wanted, for those at home, I just wanted to bring the-
So I just wanted, for those at home, I just wanted to bring this up as just giving you a little bit more insight. The administration was asked to provide some suggestions for us to kind of decrease the spending and have $318,000 savings. So really, if you're looking at this, or maybe you don't have it at home, we are going to be taking about 13% of our budget for Highland landscaping and it's going to be taken in-house with our DPS employees. I have spoken with many of them. They're super excited for potential overtime and they're up for the challenge. So, and then also too, we did hear from our police department about postponement of retirements, so there is a pause savings there. And then the postponement of the maintenance is actually for land cleaning. I had asked, I think it was our controller, Devon, like, we got to do it every year? And he said that we've done it. So I guess for this factor, we're saving some money there. And then in addition, reducing some overtime. So that gets us close to, you know, really that number that we had asked the administration to come to. To this time, I would just ask through the chair to Devon, our controller, Devon Adams, if I missed anything, feel free to clarify.
You pretty much covered it, but I'll be happy to re-note the major highlights. As you mentioned, we have reduced overtime in a number of budgets, which accounts for just under 64,000 of the entire budget amendment amount. In the police department, as mentioned, salaries were reduced by 132,000 to account for fewer retirements than were originally anticipated. In the hall and grounds budget, 19,000 was reduced and maintenance projects such as the air duct cleaning are going to be postponed. And also in general government, parks and rec and neighborhood services, you will notice some decreases totaling roughly 103,000, which again represents moving contracted landscaping services in-house. This is discussed during the budget study session held on Monday, June 24th. And these reductions will match the reductions made to the revenues in the proposed budget that was approved on June 3rd. And by making these reductions, we are increasing the fund balance by 318,000. I have nothing more to add, thank you.
What's that? Okay, Councilwoman Rakowski.
All right, thank you, Council President. Yeah, another note to make is that when we hear this discussion about overtime, that our police and fire departments were not part of that agreement, so their overtime has not been changed at all. But, you know, the side note is that I want to make perfectly clear is that while I'll be in support of this today, we are essentially using projected numbers of overtime. And these numbers are numbers that have come back over years of, that we haven't used. So, you know, there is a little bit of trepidation. I would hope that, you know, we've gotten a commitment from the administration that directors are going to be very conscious about the overtime. But on the other side of the coin, is we have added work to the DPS department. We're asking for them to manicure the city hall property and several other properties, including all of the parks. So, you know, when you have a department that is responsible for the maintenance of your entire city and your water and your sewers and any other miscellaneous thing, I'm curious and I'm worried that there is going to be the necessity for overtime in that area. So again, I'm happy that the administration has found a way to come back and balance that and put money towards the fund balance. But I do have a little trepidation in seeing how this is going to play out. I'm very excited and happy that the DPS will actually be utilizing the equipment and their skill sets that they already have, but we also have to give them the opportunity to actually get that job done. So if they run out of time in the week, something's not getting cut, then we're back to square one. So hopefully it all pans out really well. It is a significant cost savings and I hope that maybe there will be even more savings that we can realize by doing some of our own ground keeping. But I do want to just, again, highlight that we're just really talking about projected numbers. So there wasn't really a change in any kind of revenue generation or true liability expense.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem, do you have something else?
Thank you too, Councilwoman, for bringing that up. So as you mentioned, there was conversations that some of us had with the DPS employees. There's a lot that goes into mowing and snowplow. So I do anticipate that we will see an overtime budget be increased. Right now, they're not able to almost sometimes complete their daily tasks, so this is adding additional tasks on their plate. So I would just ask, you know, through the chair to the administration, if you see that it's trending that way, just come back to council to just let us know what to expect and then, you know, making budget amendments as we see fit. So I know they do have a lot on their plate, but they are excited. So I talked to them and I said, is this something you guys are excited about? They're like, yeah, we've been dying for overtime. So I would just ask that the administration, just keep us in a loop, let us know how it's trending and if we expect to see some budget amendments, we can make those as necessary.
All right, thank you. Pro Tem, is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Okay, so now we are moving back to unfinished business, approval of contractor agreement for police station lobby enhancement project.
Yes. Yes, yep. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No, sir.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Is there any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
All right, we move on to new business item number two, approval of bid for general contracting services for Axiom Construction Services Group. The site development, including parking, drives, water retention plantings and construction of a new 13,100 square foot fire station number two, amount not to exceed $6,517,500.
So moved.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Not at this time.
Okay, any discussion from the supporter?
Not at this time.
Okay, is there any? Yes, Councilman. Hornbuckle, you have?
I just, I already asked the chief already some of these questions, but just to clarify for some of the residents, the concern is about the bridge. If we go through this and finish before the bridge, will this be a problem?
Yeah, so the bridge should be done, from everything I hear, right? I'm the fire chief, so I'm not completely up to date on this, but the bridge should be done by the end of this build season, which would be November probably at the latest. This station won't be completed until, you know, late fall probably of next year, so I don't anticipate any problems.
One more question. Do you see the bridge being a problem for us during construction?
I do not at this point. I've talked to Beaver, who are willing to move their apparatus and their kind of equipment as needed. Diop from Axiom, our general contractor award bidder, or bid awardee, if you guys approved this today, is here to answer any other stuff. We had this discussion in the interview process, interviewing the general contractors, and at that point, they didn't see any problems there either, as long as they were able to move that equipment out of the way when needed.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you. Okay, Pro Tem.
Thank you. So on June 26, around, should I even say what time it is? It's like early in the morning. I had asked some follow-up questions to Chief, just to clarify a few things and a few details. So one of the questions I asked, there's just a few of them. The project costs will be just under $6 million. The budget of $6 million includes training center and administration move. So the administration, the fire administration would move to Station 2 and then new equipment. And then I had asked, how much has been spent to date from the $7 million grant? And when will this project break ground? So all of council was included in on this. Just to kind of give a little bit of recap, I don't know, Chief, you want me to read your answers or should I? Are you want to read them? If you remember them.
Whatever you prefer.
If you want to answer, if you remember them, that's fine. Just for those at home, those in the audience, just for clarity purposes.
Sure, through the chair to Council President, Pro Tem, Sampe, really the rest of council, you guys in the audience and anyone that's watching this in the future. The 6.5, which is presented here, includes the bid price, which was 5.925, I believe, plus a $500,000 contingency. So that puts that project, that's where you get the 6.5 that's up there currently. That includes the station, the admin, the classroom portion of our ultimate training center and all the drives and the rest of the stuff. What's not included in there is the training tower, which would be coming to you guys after that goes through the bid process. That's going to be $600,000 on the high end, should be closer to 575, I believe, when that comes back from bid. And then there's some administrative costs and some equipment stuff that we've already purchased in the past. So the total spent so far is 400,000 on equipment. There's probably another couple hundred thousand when we include the extractors would still have to come to you guys once that goes through the bid process and also the SCBA fill stations.
Yes, thank you, Chief. And then the project's going to break ground, hopefully if approved tonight, July 2nd. Oh, no, I'm sorry, shovels will enter September 1st. That's what you said, correct?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to answer that question. Yeah, so I believe Axiom's ready to start July 2nd. However, there is, you know, permitting and that stuff that we still have to go through. So the plan right now is to go no later than September 1 with shovels in the ground.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Chief, too, for answering us back and giving us so much detail. I appreciate it. So I know that there was a check that was presented tonight, so it looks like if there is additional funds with that money and this money, we hope to improve Station 4. Station 4 is in really bad shape for those guys, and I don't think we have any gals here that are at Station 4, that's definitely on our mind and that's definitely something that we want to approve and move on to the next project. So I just appreciate everyone's patience on 4 and hopefully we can move forward to adjust to. But I know that there's going to be probably more money that's needed, so hopefully we can reach out to others to get more money. But in that case, I do support this and I appreciate all the patience and all the information, Chief.
Any additional discussion from the council? I do have a couple of questions for you, Chief, just to speak to the public. Councilwoman Sampe, actually, Pro Tem Sampe addressed some of mine, but can you inform the public why we're making the decision to move the admin building off of Newburgh and into the Station 2 location?
Sure. That really came into play probably last summer when, it's previous administration, but we had the discussion of since these, at the time, the school is going to be part of this project, so there's a lot really that probably we could also talk about if need be. But school's part of that project, we're moving the training center. The admin handles most of the training piece or at least part of that. So that was the initial idea of moving the administration there. It just, it made sense. We've been in a building that really, that helps out on DPS as well because some of their supervisory staff is in the basement at that building, so that allowed them to move up and stay in that building, puts us closer to firefighters and also, again, puts us in a position where the training center is going to be.
And then my second question, we obviously got the $7 million from the state and we have that in hand, ready to use on this project. Can you just kind of confirm for residents, too, that no additional ARPA money is going to be used on this project and that we will have ultimately an ARPA allocation to use on future projects? Because initially, there had been an allocation of ARPA funds towards this project.
So, yeah, I think Devon might be a little bit better to answer this, but are you, in addition to the 2.5 ARPA monies or including the 2.5 ARPA money?
I'm just saying including.
Okay, yeah, so there should be some amount of money at the end of this. Obviously, if you tally up my numbers, really if you get to this, you know, extreme high, maybe we're at 8 million, which still leaves $1.5 million left from that $9.5 million kind of total budget between the 2.5 and the 7. So there should be money, and plus I'm confident the Axiom's going to come in underbid since that's kind of their history, but not to put them on the spot right here, I was kind of just joking. But we should have, you know, on the very, you know, conservative side, another million and a half dollars at the end of this project.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay, hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Okay, well, thank you for that. We will now move on to public comment. And everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right, public comment? Anyone on my left, public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Westland. Hi, my name is Len.
Hi, Len.
Len Fisher. I run Inspired Theater here in Westland. I'm here to update you about the ongoing success of Inspired Theater. I'm here to tell you why our success is especially important to Westland. I'm here to remind this body of an understanding between the former administration and the theater. This understanding was an agreement to assist in the expansion program of the building owned by the city but maintained by Inspired Theater. To date, we have invested over $120,000 in the care and maintenance of this building. We call Inspired Theater's Westland's best-kept secret. Over the past two years, we have sold out every show, bringing over 9,000 people into Westland. Not only is the theater's presence in Westland good for the restaurants nearby, but statistics also show that the thriving arts community causes property values to increase. I'm certain that the folks who put you in office are concerned about this fact. Speaking of numbers, our attendance is comprised of over 70% non-residents. We are completing a run of Gilligan's Island musical, thus the reason for my outfit. We planned 12 shows, however, the demand for tickets was so great, we added a 13th show, it sold out in 12 hours. We still have an extensive waitlist for tickets for this last weekend. I'm here asking for your continued support. I'm here to bring awareness to this body, the existence and overwhelming success of Inspired Theater. I'm here to help this council understand the importance of arts organizations in the city. I am here to ask for consideration of this council to allocate funds for the expansion and upgrade of the city-owned building known as Westland Center for the Arts. I'm here to thank Mayor Coleman, Deputy Mayor Godbout and Councilperson Bowman for their support and attendance at our shows. In the coming weeks, I will be requesting a 10-year extension to our lease and I will be strongly encouraging our patrons to lobby this body to commit finances to the Westland Center for the Arts, home of Inspired Theater. Thank you for allowing this time to share our vision.
Thank you, Len. Public comment, anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
We all know why I'm here. Where's my speedhumps? I'm, don't laugh, I'm serious, they flying down Julius. Where are they? It's time. Summer will be over. It'll be time to take up the temporary ones because of the snowplows, which I understand that too. But now, it's time. Where are my speedhumps? Somebody?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak, public rest, right?
Well, of course, we've got to try to keep it positive, which I love to keep positive, don't really like the negatives. Anyway, I want to say the fire department did a great job and also I'm happy about that check. And I think, you know, it's good that they're planning that new fire department and I support that. Believe me, I support these guys over here. I trained them for that. Love training. I'm planning to train in the city of Wayne, too. Working on my next tour. Anyway, I am a very busy person. I was advocating, I'm out in Westland a lot and love Westland. Anyway, I am a very busy person, I was advocating, I'm out in Westland a lot, and love Westland. I see what goes on around me, so I let people know if something's not unusual, if something's not right. I can always reach out to PD or the fire departments if something goes on. Anyway, I also came to the event of the Pride, I really enjoyed it, it's a very educational piece about the event that I went to, I really liked it, the ladies did great talking about the stuff that was going on, even in, into the decades, we all have gone through different stories. A lot of people have been discriminated, I've been discriminated against, though I know what it feels like when people are sometimes being judged at something that they don't know about. So that's not cool. Anyway, we took years of that, and I'm glad now that everybody is somebody, and that's what they should be. It doesn't matter if the person's with abilities, it doesn't matter who they are. Everybody, like I said, is, walks in these doors should be treated with dignity and respect. And I also went to Peter's thing today, did good, and it was good seeing him again, I miss him at City Council here. But I know he'll do good up there, and I'm going to be talking to him about mental, about mental health. Mental health is a very passionate piece to me. They need to have more funding, like with the social workers, with the Westland PD, or with other police departments, they need it because of, it's really high, and it's really, sometimes you hear the stuff on the news, how bad it is. As me being as a resource person, try to avoid that information and give out the right information, and sometimes people don't want to talk about it. It's no shame, I'm going to say it again, to ask for help. It doesn't matter what it is, someone might be having a bad day, you don't know what they're going through, chuck on them, and I'm really big about that. Even mental health, even in the heat. Heat is really, I mean, like, two weeks ago, I wasn't here because the heat, it was so bad, I'm contacting my friends, I'm making sure everyone's is okay, because I'm telling you guys to stay hydrated, fire department, whoever they are, we all, we're all human, and that's important to me. I lost someone during, years ago, during that crisis, I'm big about that. That heat stroke is nothing around to be playing around with.
Thank you, Ray. Your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else on my left, public comment? Mr. Warren.
Arthur Warren, a Westland resident. All during your budget sessions, I talked about the question of when the new fire stations, the two new fire stations being built, the question of placing digital signs there to provide information for the individuals. The city already has quite a few digital signs providing information, but it's mainly on the north end. You don't have a digital sign providing any information to those individuals who live on the south end, the south end of Westland, and I think one is needed there very, one is needed there because we would like to have the same information provided to us as the rest of the Westland citizens. If the new station is going to be a warming center or cooling center, that information can be placed right there on that sign, and folks can go over there and be treated, instead of trying to find it on Facebook somewhere. So I would like, with all these cost savings, and the new fire stations are being built, that these digital signs are placed there so our Westland citizens can be informed of where to go, what to do, and how to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Is there anyone else on my right? Yes, Mr. Barton.
Hello, City Council, Tony Parton, former resident of Westland. I had to move back to Dayton, Ohio to take care of my 91 and a half year old dad. But something special to me is I'm only 2.8 miles from the National Air Force Museum, so I go there quite a bit, like aviation. Wanted to take this chance to pass along some thoughts. Let's lift up Richard LeBlanc today in prayer. I don't know the situation, but he did post on Facebook that something was going on. Because I have been gone for a year, I wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Baumann for being elected to City Council. Also wanted to say congratulations to my good friend, Kevin. Knocked many doors. Worked on Kevin's first campaign for mayor, we didn't make it, fell a little short. But even though I'd moved away, I did support Kevin financially, and I'm glad he won, so congratulations. And I was going to tell myself to not tear up, but my good friend, Peter Hersberg, I wanted to say congratulations to him. It was, City Council was better for eight years because of Peter Hersberg. And we were very glad that he was there, he was a good, he is a good friend, I shouldn't say was, but I just wanted to pass along congratulations to him for becoming State Representative. Very proud of him, very good friend. So I lived in Westland for 24 years, and held a lot of your feet to the fire for quite a few years, and I'm sure you're glad I'm gone, maybe. But great to be back in Westland for a week to say hi to everyone and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parton. Is there anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my right? Anyone else, public comment? Okay, we will now move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, residents, thank you, everybody watching at home. Tony, thanks for the kind words. Mr. Warren, we are having that discussion about digital signage in your area. It's something that I talked to Chief Stamper about, actually, last week. So it's something we're going to discuss, figuring out how to fund and when to do it, but we are looking at doing it. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Ms. Wilson, we'll talk some more about speed humps after the meeting, because I want to get specific with you about where. But really what I want to do, first of all, is to thank our State Senator Dana Polhanke and our State Representative, Peter Hersberg. It's always great to have good news like that. State budget, you never know what you're going to get, but I was in discussion with the Governor's Office, our State Senator, our State, our new State Rep since he took office in April, and then appropriations chairs up in Lansing in order to make sure that we had the best chance possible to get a nice chunk of money that we deserve here in Westland. If you add up the 7 million that was appropriated last year when I was a State Representative for Fire Station 2, and the 5 million, nearly 4.7 million that we got this year, that's almost 12 million dollars. Out of that 12 million dollars, 10.5 million of that is going to our fire department. We have about a couple dozen firefighters that were here tonight. I want to thank you for all your service and hard work to the city personally. You can't see them on TV probably, but they're sitting here in the back row. These are the guys that go out and do the hard work and keep our city safe. We have four fire stations in our city, two of them are in pretty bad shape, and rebuilding two of those fire stations was part of a multi-year plan that really I ran for office on, and something I wanted to take care of right away as mayor. I want to thank the City Council for their support and for working with us on this, also for the trust that you had in me to do everything I could to get these projects funded. They're going to be beautiful fire stations, they're going to be what our firefighters deserve, what our residents deserve, it's going to make our city safer. Really excited to invest in public safety in our city. And, you know, the council approved making our police station lobby safer tonight, that's going to add bulletproof glass to the lobby and some other security measures. It sounds like a lot of money, but when you're adding that level of security to a building, it costs money to do that, so I appreciate the council's support on that as well. The Governor's Office did call to congratulate us on our, on our budget wins this year, so I do want to thank Governor Whitmer and her office for their support for these projects as well. $1 million of the 4.7 million is going to go to streetscape improvements throughout the city. We'll be talking to our DPS folks and residents about how we're going to approach this, but it's something that'll make our, particularly Wayne Road, we want to get that cleaned up and fix some of the issues that we're having there. And of course, make, make the road safer for drivers and pedestrians. $250,000 of the 4.7 million is a reimbursement for the two special elections that took place earlier in the year in Westland. It cost the city quite a bit of money. We participated in early voting, so there's a lot, a much larger cost to the city for these elections this year, so I was really glad to hear that the state was going to reimburse us for those costs as well. That money will go into the general fund, so I think that puts us in an even stronger position financially. I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Independence Day and 4th of July, coming up on Thursday. City offices will be closed Thursday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. Include City Hall, the library, Recycling Center, and the 18th District Court. Trash pickup will be delayed one day after that, and there's going to be no farmer's market this week, because that's usually on Thursdays as well. City office will return to normal working hours Friday, July 5th. We also have a couple great events coming up in the city. One is a citywide garage sale event where it's permit-free, so there's no fee. It'll be July 12th through July 14th. Residents should go to our city website, cityofwestland.com, register their sale to appear on the interactive map where shoppers can locate the sales throughout the city. That way, people know you're, you're doing a sale that day. Our summer concert series featuring an array of jazz performances begins next week, kicking it off on July 11th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Central City Park, and make sure to bring your own lawn chair or blanket. We're going to continue our mayor's listening tour so that residents can speak with our administration personally. The next event will be July 16th at 5:30 PM at Carrato Park, which is 8500 Flamingo Boulevard. This is an informal gathering, it allows for people to speak directly to us. I always kick these off by saying, we call it a listening tour because we're here to listen to you, not me and my staff just talking at you. And of course, we always invite City Council to participate in these as well, so feel free to join us anytime. And we usually always have our fire and police chiefs there, we have city directors from various departments at, at different stops on this tour as well. And then I just wanted to plug Saturday, July 13th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the Parks Department is hosting Free Family Field Day at Central City Park. Stop by the children's entrepreneur market and join us for games such as Egg Relay, Mario Kart, water balloon toss, and more activities. Visitors can also enjoy free access to the H2O zone following the event that day. And then one more Parks plug on my list here is Recreation Doubles Pickleball League start next week, $60 per team and goes for seven weeks. You can find a link to sign up for this on our website and Parks and Rec Portal. Tuesdays are July 9th, starting at Carrato Park, Wednesdays starts July 10th at Curtis Woods Park. And again, City Council, just appreciate your support on the items tonight, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the City Attorney's Office this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, we will start with Council comments, and this evening, we will start with Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President, nothing much for me today. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe 4th of July, and please remember, your veterans, you set off for the fireworks, a lot of them don't like it, I tell you every year, please keep that in mind. I know it's fun to set them off, but it set some of our boys off, so we'd ask you to just think twice about that, and everybody's dogs, too. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I want to thank our State Rep, Hersberg, for all the great work he's doing up there, and, you know, congratulate him on his election to be State Rep and the check that he brought to us. Definitely, the fire department definitely is going to enjoy this. If you've ever been by the fire department, they definitely can use uplift and better technology to serve the community much better. Also, Len Fisher, thank you for coming, speaking tonight. I do want to say, I agree with you, it definitely is a hidden gem. Not sure if I can say this, but I like to send my wife there to enjoy the plays as I do look forward to some improvement happening there as well. Ms. Wilson, I'm with you on this, I'm kind of a little disappointed that we haven't got speed humps over there yet. I see them all through the city, and I will follow also with the mayor to see if we can get speed humps. Mr. Warren, I think that is a great idea to have some type of digital signage in the area over there, so people can get the information to, and I think that's one of the other battles, was to make them feel like they're a part of Westland, because it's kind of isolated, so I think that'll be a really great step to bring the community closer together. And I believe that's all I have for tonight. Happy 4th, be safe out there, be respectful of our veterans, and definitely my dog as well. But thank you, have a great night.
All right, thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Lakowski.
Thank you, Council President, good evening, everyone. I'm just probably going to echo a lot of sentiments here, I'm very happy to see our fire department finally getting the buildings that were started. Sounds kind of weird, I, you know, I had three different mayors in my first term of council, so it's been an ongoing process, but we're finally going to get shovels in ground, and that's fantastic. And, you know, it does take a multitude of people to get things moving, so we really have to be thankful for the contributions from the state. But one of the things that we can't ignore when we talk about building our fire stations and rehabbing some of our police equipment is the beginning funds for all of these projects came from ARPA dollars. And we really have to be cognizant of who was working and actively protecting all of us during the COVID crisis, and that was our firefighters and our police officers. I know other people worked, there was other essential workers, but for the city of Westland, our emergency services didn't stop. And so the luxury of having 26 million, I think it ended up being 25 or whatever, being sent to our community is because we had people taking care of us, versus what our income, our economic status of our community was, and the fact that we had a need. And, you know, so we allocated the first amount of money, the 2.5, the state was able to come in and follow behind us with money, and they're going to get a wonderful facility, and hopefully they'll get a second nice facility as well. But when we talk about what we're doing for public safety, I think we have to continue the conversation and contact Treasury and ask them why we now have to fill out a grant in order for our fire department to get new gear. I think we have to be considerate of why we have to continually bid for safer grants to have staffing, and along with staffing, why we have to continually run back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back runs in a city that has the highest per capita runs. There's no rehab for the men and when, women of our department, and that is just a physiological inequity that we are putting upon the employees of Westland. There is a different effect of fighting a fire versus going on multiple medical runs. And, you know, the fact that they don't have any kind of rehab time really is a shame. And so that's really something that we should be working on, that's what I wanted from the study, didn't really get that information. But, you know, I hope we can continue to get to you guys the things that you need. Buildings are beautiful, they're wonderful, they'll be safer. You know, it didn't really include mattresses and recliners for when you maybe get a moment reprieve. But at the end of the day, what they need is gear that's not contaminated with PFOS. They need SCBA filling things, they need gear extractors to keep that equipment clean, they need multiple sets of gear so that they can actually wash their gear. These are the things that, when you're talking about public safety, this is what they really need. Buildings are great, but what they really need is the tools to do their jobs safely and come home to their families. So I will continue to investigate, fight, and try to get all of those things for you. I am biased, but I also, with that bias, can recognize what your needs are. With that, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July. With that, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. I'd like to echo Councilman Hart's comments about our veterans. Please be considerate. It's not just men that have fought for your freedom. There are men and women. There's people who are affected, and they are affected deeply, and then they require our emergency services. We also have to recognize that those PTSD episodes that may come from those explosions can take somebody's life and change their family's life forever. So if you're going to celebrate the Fourth, and I hope you do it with the gusto of, of freedom bringing, please do it considerably. Please take care of your pets. If you do have pets, try to keep them inside your house so our animal patrol officers can, you know, make sure that your furry loved ones come home. But other than that, just please celebrate responsibly, and we'll see you on the 15th, which happens to be my son's 10th birthday. So, happy birthday, AJ.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo everyone's sentiments. Happy Independence Day. Please remember, let's cherish the freedoms we have and work all together for a better future tomorrow. Everyone, please stay safe for July. I just did a safety talk at my company. Fireworks are dangerous. Everyone, I want you guys returning with all your fingers to work the next day. So please be safe and keep the fire department bored. Be safe. That's all I got.
Thank you, councilmen. We will now hear from Pro Tem.
I don't think our fire department is ever bored.
That's a wish.
Yes. That's a, that's a wish, that's for sure. One of, one of the reasons why I was, I was so vocal on that tonight, it wasn't to beat up chief, it wasn't to, to beat up anyone. It was just to get the information out there because I think that the residents at home need to know that we are continuing to invest in not only buildings, but also our, our bravest that are out there protecting us. So with that being said, that's why I kind of wanted to put things out there. I wanted to reiterate that we are continuing to invest. The state provided some money. I was really vocal in the study session about four. I think it got a little heated at times, but we just want to make sure that we're taking care of every station. And I know that Mr. Warren mentioned about the digital sign, which I agree, I actually emailed during your comments, the mayor and our controller, ICC, the council president, that maybe we can get some costs because I think that's a great tool, and we have it in other stations, so we need to get a cost to see what that will cost. But speaking on our, like I said, police and fire, obviously you know that. I'm a big supporter of you. We want to make sure that you have your tools and resources. But I'm really excited to see that training center come to fruition and, and have Westland as, as kind of a, an area of, of expertise and training. So I'm, I'm really excited that we were able to pass this tonight. I'm super excited. I know that our contractor left, but getting updates along the way, I would just ask through, you know, through the chair to chief, provide updates. I know that the, the public, when we shared those renderings, I shared it out on my social, and everyone went wild. They were so excited and asked a lot of questions and such. So I think our residents, those that might be watching at home or on YouTube, will probably want to know a little bit more. So as we go along, I've just maybe asked that we give updates. I don't know if it has to be a special presentation or whatnot, but I think people are going to be really excited. When that bridge opens up, they're going to be asking probably more questions. But again, I was just really excited that we were able to, to do that this evening. And we also approved on the consent calendar, our security contract with our security guards. It's NAI, I'm sorry, NAIAS. I don't know what it stands for, but we, we truly have amazing security guards here. I just wanted to acknowledge them. I, I was speaking with the mayor's office during a leadership meeting, and I said, this is a no-brainer. Our security guards not only welcome you, but they walk around the building inside and out just to make sure everyone's safe. They've walked us to our car. They walk other people. So it was a no-brainer for me, but I just want to acknowledge them and just thank them for, you know, just keeping all of us safe here at City Hall. The mayor did mention about the citywide garage sale. So that's, as mentioned, July 12th through the 14th. So that's going to be pretty exciting. I kind of was bummed that we're not doing a country, a hot country nights. I really got into that last year, but I know the concert series at Tatten Park is going to be ramping up on Thursdays, so that should be fun. And then on July 22nd, we're going to be having our ARPA and CERT program study session here at City Hall. So I've been working and talking with Chief Stamper on a CERT program for, I don't know, like two years maybe or, or something. So I'm really excited that we're able to, to kind of discuss what that will mean for the community. So we'll have that study session. It's going to be kind of a dual study, dual study session between the two items. I also wanted to kind of bring up too, through the adminis, or through the chair to the administration. So I had a resident reach out to me. They said the strip mall on Merriman and Warren is just getting worse and worse with blight, so I'm going to reach out to you on that to see what's going on. I don't think there's any development going on there, but it does kind of look yucky. So I'm going to reach out to you on that, just to see if we can get some information. I've had a couple of people reach out. So our next meeting is Monday, July 15th at 7:00. As stated by all my colleagues, I hope you have a safe and happy Fourth of July. Spend it with family. Be safe and kind to each other. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Couple of things before I get into my main portion of the comments tonight for the mayor's office. One of them was already brought up by Ms. Wilson, which is the speed humps. I know last year, your southeast area of the city was one of the first ones to get the speed humps, albeit, I know you wanted, you know, more last year, but if we can get those, you know, down there and DPS can get down to, to put those in, that would be great. The other thing is just a follow-up, and I will send an email, and this is the meeting with the Citizens Advisory Council, which I hope that meeting is scheduled to take place or is in the process of getting scheduled. I know that was something a couple of months back that we had talked about and discussed. So I know from talking to Ms. Worm, who sits on the Citizens Advisory Council, she had not yet met with the administration. So I do hope that we can get that meeting scheduled with the Citizens Advisory Council as well. Want to thank State Senator Paul Hanke and Representative Hersberg for coming to the meeting tonight with a great presentation for us with the 3.5 million dollars for the fire station, project for fire station number four. I think that's going to be great. I want to thank, with regards to Station Two, obviously all of my colleagues here for supporting this and moving this project forward, but there's a lot of people that have made this project finally come to fruition. Thank you to then Representative Coleman, now Mayor Coleman, for getting us, along with State Senator Paul Hanke and State Representative Wogala, that initial tranche of money for this project. I want to thank former Mayor Wild, former Mayor Londo, who, that project really started under their administration, as well as former facilities director, Vic Barra, Director Barra, who was a part of the initial planning and development of the Station Two project. So thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the former mayors, Wild and Londo. Thank you to direct, former Director Barra as well for all of their contributions getting this off the ground. And of course, thank you to our chief, Chief Stamper. This has been a long time coming. We've had a lot of discussion on this. We've had a study session on this, and so, you know, we owe all of our men and women who put on the uniform the best places, the best facilities to operate out of possible. And now, not only are we doing Station Two, but to get the, you know, announcement that we have some funding coming forward for Station Four, hopefully we can get on that pretty quickly as well, get with the engineering firm, and be able to, you know, kind of balance these projects out simultaneously. Because as my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, has mentioned, I think time and again for the last three or four years about Station Four, all of the issues with the bays and the flooding that are going on over there, we don't need to tell many of the members in this audience. You obviously all know what's going on there. So hopefully sooner rather than later, we can kick that project off and, and get to going on Station Four. But this is a really exciting transformative thing for our community. So thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the mayor's office. All the people previously that, you know, put a lot of work into making this happen, state of Michigan. And thank you to all of my colleagues for advancing this forward. Just a reminder, we've talked about this a couple of times. Pro Tem Sampe and I have been working with the administration, hopefully get a public meeting or hearing of some sort with DTE. We know that you have a lot of questions and a lot of frustration, and rightfully so, pent up with DTE. So we're hoping that we can get that meeting, you know, on the calendar here. Last time we tried to invite them, when Pro Tem organized a meeting, they did not show up. So this time, we actually want them here. And I know several years back, when we had requested a meeting with DTE, they unfortunately sent a list of talking points into our facilities director, Director Barra at the time, and they made him come up here and unfortunately be the scapegoat to have to read them off. DTE should be coming here, explaining themselves to the residents and the business owners in this community, not a facilities director, not the mayor's office, not anyone on council. They need to come and take a little bit of the heat and stand, you know, in the kitchen with the fire and explain what they're doing, how they're upgrading our grid, what they're doing to make it more reliable, and give, you know, residents in the business community some answers on what's going on. Thank you, Len, for coming out and, you know, talking about the theater. It's a project that I've, you know, been in support of, so we'll see where it goes. But, you know, certainly, thank you for all you do, bringing arts and culture here into the community. Very much appreciative of that. I had the chance to correspond with our Congresswoman and her staff just to inquire about an idea that I've, you know, kicked around and talked to some of my colleagues about and have mentioned up here and at, at folks' doors. And in fact, I had a pretty healthy conversation over the weekend with the fire chief about this, and that's the Public Health Department. I have, you know, just inquired about what kind of federal funds exist to do such a program. I think that, you know, a public health department think, people think about that and go, oh, well, big government. Is this just another layer of, you know, big government that we're adding to the city? And I can't say that this was an original idea for me. I was inspired by the work that Wayne County's already doing and by the work that the city of Dearborn is doing under Mayor Abdullah Hamud and his team. So this is not my original idea, but it is, you know, something that I've looked at other communities doing, and I think we can really do here in the city of Westland. One of the big things that I think a public health department, among many other things it can do, is to help our police and fire. We have a lot of residents and a lot of people that they see that are, you know, repeat residents, that they see two and three and four and five and six times in a month, sometimes in a week. There are, you know, individuals that they've probably seen over a dozen times in a month. And when they have that experience, that is another run that takes up their time, and that is also something that, you know, the resident is obviously having a, a public health emergency of, of some kind. So with the Public Health Department, one of the things I'd really like to see us invest in is what's called community paramedicine. This is something that some of the firefighters in our audience have enlightened myself on and Pro Tem on. We've had that conversation, and the chief has enlightened me on as well. But something where we can have a public health department with a community paramedic or a traveling nurse, whatever we want to kind of frame it, so to speak. And they can go and make home visits, to say to this resident that we've seen two or three or four or five times in a month, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, what's going on? How can we help? We obviously can't be a medical provider as a doctor or pharmacist would be, but what can we do to help? Maybe, you know, this individual is diabetic or has high blood pressure, and they're not able to take their medication, or it's an affordability issue. What can we do to get that person on the pathway to better wellness and health? And having a public health department can, that can kind of do that after response. Fire department makes a run, they pay a visit, they take that person to the hospital or medical facility. We come in after the fact to figure out what's wrong, how can we help? How can we steer that person towards whatever it is to get them on the right path to health and wellness? We can do things around fitness and dietary needs. We can do public health programs and, and expos. So I think, you know, a public health department is, it's a really big undertaking. It's going to be expensive. It's going to require a lot of discussion and dialogue with the administration, with the council, with the community on how we fund such a program, what the scale and scope is. If we even do one at all, maybe there are folks that aren't in support of it, and that's, that's okay. It's an ambitious idea, and it's not something, you know, I want to promise that we're going to do or that we can even do overnight or with, let alone within six months or a year. But it's just something that I've, you know, really passionate about, and other communities have, you know, taken the initiative to do, and I just want to kind of raise some awareness on that. Just a couple of other things here. We voted on tonight, the license plate readers with the police department, that is a tool that's going to give them, you know, kind of a crime fighting tool. One thing that I want to reiterate, because this is a question that I had asked the chief, this is not for traffic enforcement. Cameras are not used, LPRs are not used for direct traffic enforcement to monitor people like blowing through a light or a stop sign or anything like that. So I wanted to reiterate that it's not used for that purpose. The other thing that I'd like to have some discussion on with these is, you know, how long we collect and store the data? I don't want to be the NSA around here collecting and storing people's data indefinitely. I've read, you know, documentation from the ACLU about maybe having a 30-day storage period. So that's something that I will, you know, ultimately look to have that conversation with the administration and the police department on that. Last, I think, yes, two more things. Social work program, my colleague brought it up. Again, I think that can, is something we can fold into potentially a future Public Health Department. But in the meantime, the work that Jennifer Grismalla and her team do and partnering with the police department, I think that's a great program. So I really want to thank Jennifer. I want to thank the chief and the Westland Police Department for really wanting to continue this initiative. Again, not every response deserves a police-only response. There are mental health emergencies and crises people who experience and are having brain health issues where it is best for a police officer and a social worker to respond. So I'm really thankful to the department for continuing this program and my colleagues for, you know, voting to continue this program and the administration and mayor's office as well. And then last not, last but not least, as Jack Kennedy, President Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. And in the spirit of Fourth of July, in the spirit of our nation gaining its independence, do ask that and answer that question, what you can do to give back for your country to continue the freedoms that we all enjoy and to continue the ongoing fight for liberty and justice for all Americans. Because we know, even when Jack Kennedy said that quote back in 1963, I believe, we did not have liberty, justice, and freedom for all Americans. And certainly at the founding of this nation, the Declaration of Independence was not independence for all because we had hundreds of thousands of Americans who were not counted as human beings. They were compromised away as three-fifths of a person. And so when we celebrate our independence, recognize that Independence Day for America was not granted to all Americans at first. And it wasn't even until, I mean, certainly the emancipation of slaves and why we celebrate Juneteenth, but really until the repeal of Jim Crow and the rest, and the, not even, I won't even say the restoration because full voting rights were never actually granted. The passage of the Voting Rights Act, the passage of the Civil Rights Act, that we even gained some semblance of independence for Americans who were black or brown or in marginalized communities. So this Independence Day, keep in mind that the fight for freedom and liberty and justice for all is an ongoing fight and is something that we are continuing to battle for, for all Americans. And for all those who serve overseas in our military and all those retired veterans, thank you for your service, keeping our nation free and allowing us to celebrate this holiday. And as my colleague said, Councilman Hart, be cognizant when you're shooting off fireworks, that we have many individuals who suffer from PTSD and who fireworks affect in a different way than you and your family who may be out there enjoying them. And with that, I hope you are all safe and wish you all safe and happy Fourth of July. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Adjourn.